Get him out of here. Four white cops grab a black man in the middle of a city council meeting. He's wearing a suit, speaking calmly about police accountability. But Detective Raymond Hayes doesn't care. Escort him out, now. They drag Owen Carter across the floor like a criminal. His shoes scrape linoleum, papers scatter, sixteen people watch, nobody stops them. One officer laughs. Hayes leans close. Nobody cares what you have to say. Fifty-two seconds. That's how long it takes to humiliate a black man in front of cameras and elected officials. For speaking during public comment. But here's what those four cops don't know. What Hayes doesn't know. What nobody in that room knows. In thirty minutes, they're going to hear five words that will end their careers. Please welcome our new police chief. And the man they just dragged out, that's him. Stay with me. This gets unbelievable. Owen Carter folds his daughter's lunch note the way he folded parachutes in the army, precisely, carefully. Knowing a life might depend on it. It's Wednesday morning, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Emma, twelve years old, sits across from him eating scrambled eggs. She asks about his big week. Owen keeps it vague. Just work stuff, sweetheart. She doesn't need to know that in nine hours her father will test whether sixteen years of service means anything against a system designed to protect itself. The appointment letter sits in a manila folder on the kitchen counter, dated October eighth. Signed by Mayor Patricia Wilson in blue ink. Chief of Police, City of Riverside. The title that should have been announced a week ago. Instead, the mayor asked Owen to wait. Political sensitivities, union negotiations, strategic timing. Owen said yes to the secrecy because he understood something the mayor didn't. He wanted to see the department's true face before he tried to change it. For seven days Owen has walked through Riverside Police Headquarters as lieutenant. Same rank he's held for five years. He watches who talks to whom, who gets isolated, who defers to Detective Raymond Hayes. Even though Hayes is just a detective, technically three ranks below Owen. But titles don't capture real power. Hayes runs the department through fear and favors, everyone knows it, nobody says it. Owen takes notes, mental notes mostly. The way younger officers avoid certain hallways. How complaints get discussed in whispers. The casual jokes about problem citizens and managing expectations. He's been a cop for sixteen years. He knows the language of institutional rot. Emma interrupts his thoughts. Dad, you look worried. Just thinking about work. Are you in trouble? No, baby, just changes coming. She studies him with that twelve-year-old wisdom that sees more than adults admit. Good changes? Owen thinks about the fourteen complaints filed against Hayes since two thousand nine. Fourteen people who tried to speak up, zero findings sustained, zero consequences. The system protected Hayes every time because Hayes is the system. I hope so, Owen says. That evening he reads to Emma from her favorite sci-fi book. It's about an undercover hero who infiltrates an oppressive regime. Emma asks why heroes always have to hide their identities. Sometimes you have to let people show you who they really are before you can change things, Owen tells her. She thinks about this. Is that what you're doing? Owen closes the book. Maybe. I'll tell you in a few days. Later, after Emma's asleep, Owen selects his suit for tonight's council meeting. Navy blue, perfectly pressed. He's not attending as the incoming chief, he's attending as a citizen. Because he needs to see what happens when an ordinary person, even an ordinary cop, asks for accountability in Riverside. He needs to see if the system will let him speak. Or if it will reveal exactly what he suspects. That power here doesn't come from badges or laws. It comes from who you're willing to protect and who you're willing to silence. The folder with his appointment letter stays on the counter. October eighth to October fifteenth. Seven days of deliberate silence. Not because the mayor wanted secrecy, because Owen asked for it. He wanted to walk into that council meeting unknown, untitled, unprotected by the position he's about to assume. He wanted to see what they'd do. In eight hours he'll find out. The Riverside City Council Chamber holds sixty-two people when every seat is filled. Tonight, forty-one citizens occupy those chairs. The air smells like old coffee and cleaning solution. Fluorescent lights hum overhead. The city camera in the back corner blinks red, recording everything as required by municipal code. Owen Carter signs the public comment sheet at six forty-five P M. He's speaker number four. Three people ahead of him will discuss parking regulations and a zoning variance. Routine matters that take eight minutes total. Detective Raymond Hayes arrives at seven fifteen P M. Plainclothes, off-duty technically, but he's here representing the police union. Hayes sits in the back row, arms crossed, watching. Four uniformed officers stand near the side entrance. Standard procedure for council meetings. Murphy, Klein, Harris, and one more. They're supposed to be neutral observers, Owen knows better. At seven twenty-eight P M, the chair calls his name. Owen walks to the podium, adjusts the microphone. The council members look tired, it's been a long meeting already. My name is Owen Carter, he begins. I'm here to discuss accountability in our police department. Councilmember Victor Allen interrupts before Owen finishes his second sentence. Sir, do you live in District Four? I live in District Two, but this concerns. Please, stick to matters in your district. Owen keeps his voice level. Police accountability affects all districts. I'd like to present data on complaint resolution rates. Allen leans forward. Is this on the agenda? Owen has two minutes of allotted time, he's used eighteen seconds. The agenda allows public comment on any matter of public concern. I have documentation showing that in the past five years, our department has settled. Raymond Hayes stands, his voice cuts across the room. He's disrupting the meeting. Owen turns slightly, makes eye contact with Hayes. I have one minute and forty-two seconds remaining. Hayes addresses the uniformed officers. Escort him out, disrupting municipal proceedings. This is the moment. Owen has wondered if they'd actually do it. If Hayes would be bold enough to silence a citizen speaking during lawful public comment. If the officers would follow an order from someone with no authority to give it. The answer arrives at seven thirty-four and two P M. Four officers move toward the podium. Owen sets down his notes, doesn't resist, goes limp, forcing them to carry his weight. It's a technique from his military de-escalation training, make them work for it, make it visible. Hayes grabs his left arm, Murphy takes the right, Klein and Harris provide support. The vinyl gloves on Hayes's hands squeak against Owen's suit jacket. Owen's breathing stays even. He counts, one, two, three. Lisa Thompson, the council member who knows Owen's secret, half rises from her seat. Her hand extends like she might object. She doesn't. Can't. Not yet. The announcement isn't for another forty minutes. Eight. Nine. Ten. They're moving him toward the exit now. Owen's shoes drag across the linoleum. The sound echoes, someone's phone falls to the floor, plastic on tile. This is being recorded, Owen says quietly. Hayes leans close. Nobody cares. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. The door opens. Hallway air cooler than the chamber, the fluorescent hum fades behind them. Forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two. They release him. Owen straightens his jacket. Hayes stands close invading space deliberately. Stay out of police business, friend, you don't know how things work. Owen meets his eyes. I think I do. Hayes smirks. You're not a cop, you don't get it. Owen says nothing, just walks toward the parking lot. Behind him he hears the officers laughing, returning to the chamber. Murphy says something about handling it. Owen sits in his car, checks his watch. Seven forty-one P M, thirty-eight minutes until the announcement. He doesn't leave, just sits there, engine running, radio off, watching the building entrance. Thirty-eight minutes until everyone inside understands what just happened. He starts driving slow circles around City Hall, waiting. At seven forty-five P M, Lisa Thompson uploads a thirty-two second video clip to Twitter. No hashtags, no commentary, just the caption. This is what happens when Riverside citizens try to speak about police accountability. Watch what happened tonight at our council meeting. The video shows Owen at the podium, shows Hayes standing without authorization, shows four officers moving in, shows Owen going limp, forcing them to drag him. Shows the door closing behind them. Thirty-two seconds of civic process breaking down in real time. By eight o'clock P M, a local activist account with twelve thousand followers has reposted it. This time with hashtags. Riverside Accountability. Police Reform. Speak Up. The algorithm notices, starts pushing it into feeds across the region. By eight thirty P M, a political account with eighty-six thousand followers shares it. The video jumps geographic boundaries. People in other cities, other states, start watching a man being removed from a public meeting for the crime of speaking. By nine o'clock P M, three local news stations are monitoring the situation. By nine thirty the first one posts. Man removed from Riverside Council Meeting, Video raises questions. A college student who was in the chamber uploads his angle at ten o'clock P M. Better resolution. Close-up. You can hear Owen clearly say, this is being recorded. You can hear Hayes respond, nobody cares. That audio clip spreads faster than the video, ten words that summarize everything wrong with the system. This is being recorded. Nobody cares. By eleven o'clock P M, the combined view count across all platforms reaches eighty-four thousand. The comment sections explode. Thousands of people asking the same questions. What law did he break? Who authorized the removal? Why was a detective giving orders to uniformed officers? Who is Owen Carter? That last question matters most. Because nobody knows yet. Sarah Mitchell, investigative reporter for the Riverside Tribune, wakes at six o'clock A M to seventeen news alerts. She watches the video three times. Something bothers her about the name. Owen Carter. She's covered City Hall for eleven years. That name sounds familiar, she starts making calls. By noon on October sixteenth, Sarah has collected statements from sixteen witnesses who were in the chamber. Eleanor Henderson, sixty-eight, retired teacher, sits in her living room and tells Sarah. I thought they were arresting him, but he didn't break any law. He was speaking calmly during public comment, they were the aggressive ones. Brandon Taylor, twenty-two, the college student with the clear video says. I kept recording because something felt wrong. The cops were laughing after. That stuck with me, like it was funny to them. A city employee who asks to remain anonymous tells Sarah. I've been to fifty of these meetings, I've never seen anyone removed for speaking during public comment, never. The police union issues a statement at eleven hunkock A M. Officers responded appropriately to a disruption of municipal proceedings, the individual was asked to leave and refused. Standard protocol was followed, we stand by our members' actions. Sarah checks the protocol manual. Page thirty-four, section six. Removal requires presiding officer authorization. She calls Victor Allen's office. Did Allen authorize the removal? His assistant says Allen is unavailable for comment. That's when Sarah knows something deeper is wrong. Officials go silent when they're scared. By one o'clock P M, the hashtag, who eyes Owen Carter is trending locally. Sarah searches city databases, finds Owen Carter, Lieutenant, sixteen years of service, decorated twice, clean disciplinary record. This makes the removal even stranger. A cop removed by cops? She calls the mayor's office. The receptionist stone walls. The mayor is unavailable. Can you comment on the Owen Carter incident? I'm not authorized. Click. Dial tone. At three o'clock P M, about eighty citizens gather outside City Hall. Spontaneous protest, not huge, but visible. Signs say, let him speak, and accountability now and we were watching. Local news covers it. The story extends another news cycle. Sarah interviews James Anderson, the civil rights attorney who's represented victims of police misconduct for fifteen years. I've represented four clients against Detective Hayes personally, Anderson tells her. All cases settled confidentially, but I can say there's a documented pattern, and he's never faced consequences. Sarah's investigation shifts. This isn't just about one incident. This is about Hayes, about a system that protects certain officers no matter what they do. By evening the story has evolved. It's no longer just man removed from meeting, it's, why was Detective Hayes there? And, who gave him authority? And, what else has Hayes gotten away with? The Riverside Police Department issues a second statement at eight o'clock P M. We are reviewing the incident, body camera footage is being examined per policy. Translation, buying time. But time is something they don't have, because Sarah has figured out what's bothering her about Owen Carter's name. She remembers now. Three months ago Mayor Wilson announced a national search for a new police chief. The search concluded weeks ago, but no announcement came. Owen Carter, Lieutenant, sixteen years, decorated officer. Sarah's hands freeze on her keyboard. She calls the mayor's office one more time, leaves a message. I need to ask about the police chief position, please call back. Then she waits. Because something is about to break open, she can feel it. At nine o'clock P M, her phone rings, unknown number. Ms. Mitchell, this is Patricia Wilson's office, the mayor will address everything tonight. Tonight, there's no meeting scheduled. There is now, emergency session, eight P M was just announced, you'll want to be there. The line goes dead. Sarah grabs her keys. At eight o'clock P M on October fifteenth, forty-four minutes after Owen Carter was dragged from the chamber. An emergency council session convenes. Every seat is filled now. All sixty-two. Standing room overflows. Sarah Mitchell sits front row, notebook ready, three TV cameras instead of one. Hayes is here. He sits in the same back row, same crossed arms. The four officers who removed Owen stand near the side entrance. Murphy whispers something to Klein. They think this is about commendation, about being thanked for maintaining order. They're wrong. Mayor Patricia Wilson steps to the podium at eight oh two P M. She looks tired, tense, like someone who's been arguing with lawyers for the past hour. Two months ago, she begins, after an extensive national search. This council authorized me to identify a candidate for police chief who embodies reform, accountability, and lived experience. The room goes quiet. This isn't what people expected. We sought someone who knows this department from inside. Who has earned commendation from every chief he's served under. A decorated veteran who served our country before serving Riverside. A father who understands what it means to protect. A man of unquestionable integrity. Sarah's pen hovers above paper. She knows what's coming. Tonight. I'm honored to officially introduce Riverside's new Chief of Police. Appointed October eighth, taking command October twenty-third, Lieutenant Owen Carter. The side door opens. Owen enters wearing full dress uniform. The moment fractures. Someone gasps. Audible intake of breath. A phone hits the floor. Plastic on linoleum. Then silence. Complete heavy silence. The kind that fills space when reality rearranges itself. Sarah watches Hayes. His face drains of color, his knuckles go white against the armrest. He doesn't move. Can't move. His entire career is recalculating in real time. Murphy looks at Klein. Klein looks at Harris. Harris stares straight ahead, jaw tight. They're calculating too. Forty-four minutes ago they dragged their new chief through that door. Gerald Brooks, the city manager, sits three rows back. His surprised expression arrives a beat too late. Like an actor who missed his cue. Lisa Thompson stands first, starts clapping, others join slowly. Not everyone. Councilmember Allen stays seated, arms crossed. But reform advocates clap enthusiastically. Community members from the earlier protest cheer. Owen walks to the podium, the same podium from forty-four minutes ago. He doesn't smile, just looks at Hayes. Holds eye contact, five full seconds. Long enough for Hayes to understand that Owen counted every second of those fifty-two. Thank you Mayor Wilson. Thank you, council members. Thank you to the citizens of Riverside. His voice is even, calm. The same voice from forty-four minutes ago. I'm honored to serve as your Chief of Police. I'm committed to reform, transparency, and accountability. To all members of this department, I see you, I know who you are, and I'm ready to begin. He doesn't mention the incident, doesn't need to. Everyone in this room knows what just happened. The man they humiliated is now their boss. The irony requires no explanation. I'll take command officially on October twenty-third, until then I'll be preparing, thank you. The press swarms afterward. Chief Carter, how do you feel about what happened earlier? Informed. Informed about what? About the culture I'm inheriting, about the work ahead. Will there be an investigation? I'll review all incidents involving use of force and exercise of authority. All incidents. Including tonight? Owen pauses, looks directly into the camera. Especially tonight. Hayes pushes through the crowd toward the exit. Sarah intercepts him. Detective Hayes, comment? No comment. His hand shakes as he pushes the door open. Owen leaves through the side entrance. Drives home alone. Emma's asleep. He sits in the kitchen, still in uniform. Looks at the appointment letter on the counter, doesn't smile, doesn't celebrate. Just thinks, seven days until I start. They have seven days to decide who they are. Sarah Mitchell doesn't sleep much that night. By six o'clock A M on October sixteenth, she's at her desk with coffee and questions. Owen Carter knew. He walked into that meeting knowing he was about to become chief. He let them remove him. But why? She starts digging. The Freedom of Information Act request goes out at eight o'clock A M. All complaints, investigations, and disciplinary actions for Detective Raymond Hayes nineteen ninety-six to present. The city has five business days to respond. Sarah doesn't have five days. She starts calling sources. James Anderson, the civil rights attorney, picks up on the second ring. I was wondering when you'd call. Tell me about Hayes. I've represented four clients against him, all settled confidentially. But here's what I can say, there's a pattern, use of force, intimidation, and the system protects him every time. How? The union contract. It's virtually impossible to discipline officers in Riverside. I'll send you the relevant sections. The PDF arrives twenty minutes later, two hundred forty-three pages. Sarah starts reading, takes notes on Article fourteen, Section fourteen point three. Officer Bill of Rights. Forty-eight hour delay before questioning. Union rep must be present during all investigations. Officers can't be questioned for more than two hours at a time. Section nineteen point two makes her stop cold. Arbitration required for any disciplinary action, and arbitrators overturn seventy-three percent of disciplined decisions. The system is designed to protect officers, not hold them accountable. By afternoon Sarah has contacted a local activist who tracks police misconduct. The unofficial database shows fourteen complaints against Hayes since two thousand nine. Fourteen. She starts building a timeline. Two thousand nine. Use of excessive force during traffic stop. Complantant Thomas Williams, twenty-eight, black man. Allegation, Hayes slammed him against car hood. Outcome, internal investigation cleared Hayes. Force deemed justified. Note in file, body camera had, technical malfunction. Two thousand eleven, intimidation of witness. Teresa Johnson, forty-five, witnessed a police incident. Allegation, Hayes visited her home, told her memory might be faulty. Outcome, complaint withdrawn before investigation completed. Johnson moved out of state shortly after. Two thousand thirteen, racial profiling. Complantant name redacted. Allegation, Hayes stopped individual matching description when no crime had occurred. Outcome, unfounded. Officer acted on reasonable suspicion. The pattern continues. Two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen. Traffic stops, use of force, all cleared. Common factor, all complainants were people of color. None resulted in discipline. Two thousand twenty-one stands out. Excessive force, video evidence. Richard Miller, thirty-two, arrested during protest. Allegation, Hayes used chokehold despite department prohibition. Outcome, city settled for thirty-five thousand dollars. Confidential. Video sealed. Twenty twenty-three, two complaints in March alone. Both cleared by Internal Affairs within weeks. Twenty twenty-four, most recent complaint filed in March. Excessive force during mental health welfare check. Hayes allegedly injured elderly man. Status, under investigation, six months later. Fourteen complaints, zero sustained findings, zero days suspended, zero consequences. Sarah calls Margaret Stevens, a former city attorney who retired in twenty twenty-two. Stevens agrees to talk off record. Those contract terms were negotiated in twenty eighteen, Stevens says. The union had tremendous leverage, threat of strike, the city caved on almost everything. Now it's nearly impossible to discipline anyone. I tried. The arbitration process is designed to protect officers, not ensure accountability. Sarah shifts her investigation to finances. Public employee salaries are posted online per state law. She downloads the spreadsheet, sorts by total compensation. Raymond Hayes, twenty twenty-two, base salary eighty-nine thousand six hundred dollars, overtime sixty-eight thousand two hundred. Total, one hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred. Twenty twenty-three, base ninety-one thousand eight hundred, overtime seventy-one thousand five hundred. Total, one hundred sixty-four thousand three hundred. Twenty twenty-four, year-to-date, base ninety-four thousand, overtime sixty-two thousand three hundred. On track for eighty-three thousand overtime annually. Sarah cross-references with other detectives. Average overtime, twenty-eight thousand per year. Hayes earns two point five times that. His overtime alone exceeds many officers' base salaries. She digs deeper. Overtime logs are public record. She requests Hayes's time sheets for the past three years. When they arrive, she cross-references with case files. Many of Hayes's overtime hours are logged on cases that closed quickly. Some required minimal investigation, others were dismissed. Sixteen hours of overtime on a case that closed in three days. Twenty hours on a case that was dropped. Then she notices something else. Every overtime approval over five thousand dollars per month requires city manager signature. She requests Hayes's approval forms. Gerald Brooks's signature appears three hundred forty-eight times over three years. Every single approval, no rejections, no questions asked. Sarah researches Brooks's background. Before becoming city manager in two thousand twelve, he was a consultant. Specialty, labor relations, helping cities negotiate with unions. Then he became city manager in a city with a strong police union. Potential conflict of interest, not illegal, but questionable. You're probably wondering how deep this goes. Stay with me. Because what Sarah finds in the next forty-eight hours changes everything. She searches email archives, finds correspondence between Brooks and Hayes going back years. Frequent communication, two to three times per week. Topics often marked, budget matters and personnel issues. One email from two thousand twenty-three, subject line, re the usual. Body redacted, marked, attorney-client privilege. On October twentieth, Sarah calls a retired captain named Williams. He left the force in two thousand nineteen, agrees to meet for coffee. "I left because I couldn't change the culture," Williams tells her. Hayes runs a protection racket inside the department. Certain officers protect each other. If you're in Hayes's group, you're untouchable. If you're not, you get isolated, poor assignments, or pushed out. How many officers in this group? Maybe fifteen to twenty out of one hundred eighty, but they're in key positions: detectives, training officers, union reps. What about Internal Affairs? Williams laughs bitterly. IA is staffed by officers selected by the union. You see the problem. What about Owen Carter? Williams leans forward. Owen's the first chief hired from outside that system. That's why Brooks kept the appointment quiet. Brooks and Hayes are aligned. They wanted Owen to fail publicly before he even started. Sarah's next question is careful. You think Brooks deliberately set Owen up? I believe, Williams emphasizes the word, that Brooks knew exactly what would happen if Owen spoke at that meeting, and he made sure the announcement came after. Back at her office, Sarah files an emergency FOIA request for internal memos from early October, specifically October eighth through fifteenth. She cites urgent public interest for expedited processing. Two days later, the memo arrives. Dated October tenth, two thousand twenty-four. From Gerald Brooks to department heads. Subject: Chief Appointment Announcement. Body: "The announcement of our new police chief will be delayed until the October fifteenth council meeting for strategic timing purposes." Strategic timing. Brooks knew Owen was appointed on October eighth. He delayed the announcement for seven days, and Hayes just happened to be at the October fifteenth meeting. Sarah starts writing. Her article runs on October twenty-first at six o'clock PM. Headline: Riverside Detective Who Removed New Police Chief Has Fourteen Complaints, Zero Discipline. The piece details Hayes's complaint history, the union contract protections, the overtime irregularities, Brooks's approvals, the timeline that suggests deliberate sabotage. It goes viral within two hours. The police union issues a response. "Detective Hayes denies any wrongdoing and has served this city with distinction for twenty-eight years. These allegations are a coordinated attack on law enforcement and are designed to undermine the good men and women who risk their lives daily." But the damage is done. The wall of silence is cracking. The system that protected Hayes is being exposed, and Sarah knows she's not finished. Because at ten o'clock PM that night, she receives an anonymous email. Subject: "You asked about October twelfth, fourteen." Attachment: A password-protected zip file. Password hint: The number of complaints you published. Sarah types: fourteen. The file unlocks. Inside are forty-eight emails between Raymond Hayes and Gerald Brooks dated October twelfth through fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The smoking gun she didn't even know she was looking for. The emails wait on Sarah's screen. But before she reads them, Hayes and the union strike back. October sixteenth evening, the Riverside Police Officers Association calls an emergency meeting. Forty-eight officers attend out of one hundred eighty, total. The core. Hayes stands at the front, union president beside him. The minutes, later obtained through FOIA, record the discussion. Hayes speaks. "Carter's appointment is a betrayal of this department." Motion passes. Vote of no confidence in Carter's appointment, forty-six to two. Two abstentions. One is Daniel Harris. The strategy gets discussed. Public pressure campaign, media outreach. Tell our side of the story. Lobbying council members to delay or reverse the appointment. One officer suggests making his first days difficult. The minutes record only. Discussion of operational concerns. By October eighteenth, the union issues a press release. Riverside Police Officers Association expresses concerns about Carter appointment. The statement claims rushed appointment, lack of proper vetting, political motivations. We question whether Lieutenant Carter has the command experience necessary to lead this department. Conservative council members echo the message. Victor Allen tweets, "Serious questions about this appointment process." Another council member publicly calls for "review" of the appointment. Local conservative talk radio invites Hayes on air. He accepts. "I have twenty-eight years of experience," Hayes tells the host. "I've served honorably, and now I'm being demonized for doing my job." What do you think of Carter? No comment on personnel matters, but I'll say this: Leadership requires respect. You can't order respect. The host agrees. The interview spreads through police circles. Hayes becomes a symbol, the good cop under attack by political correctness. Meanwhile, political pressure intensifies on Mayor Wilson. She receives calls from the union president, three council members expressing concerns, local business leaders with ties to police interests. The message: Delay the appointment. Let things cool down. Mayor Wilson stands firm. Owen Carter was appointed legally. He takes command October twenty-third as planned. But the pressure doesn't stop. It shifts target. October nineteenth morning, Owen finds the first letter in his mailbox. No stamp, hand-delivered, plain envelope. Typed message: Chief Carter, you're not wanted. Do the right thing. Resign before it's too late. You'll regret staying. No signature. Owen photographs it, files a police report. The responding officer is Murphy, one of the four who removed him. Murphy writes, "Vague threat, no actionable leads." That afternoon, the second letter arrives. More explicit. We know where Emma goes to school, Washington Middle. We know her schedule. Three fifteen dismissal. Think about her safety. Owen's blood runs cold. This crosses every line, threatening a twelve-year-old child. He calls the school immediately, alerts the principal, requests extra supervision during dismissal. The principal asks if police should be notified. "I am the police," Owen says quietly, "and I don't know who I can trust yet." Evening brings the third letter, most direct. "You think you're brave? Brave is protecting your daughter, not this job. Choose wisely." Owen sits at the kitchen table. Emma's upstairs doing homework, unaware. He stares at the three letters spread before him. This is the cost. They're showing him the cost. At four thirty PM that same day, the intimidation escalates. Emma's at Washington Middle School. Dismissal time is three fifteen. She walks out with friends, notices a man in a car parked across the street, dark sedan, engine running, driver watching the school entrance. Emma doesn't recognize the car. Most parent vehicles are familiar. This one isn't. The man is on his phone, looking directly at the school entrance. Emma feels uncomfortable, walks quickly to the designated pickup spot. Owen's friend arrives at three twenty to pick her up. Emma mentions the car. The friend looks. The sedan pulls away quickly. Partial license plate visible, starts with R four K. The friend reports it to the school. School calls Owen. He files another police report. Suspicious vehicle near his daughter's school. But Owen knows this isn't random. This is deliberate intimidation. That evening, Emma asks the question that breaks him. "Dad, why was that man watching us?" Probably nothing, sweetheart, just being careful. Is it because you're going to be chief? Maybe. Some people don't like change. Emma's next question is quiet. Question: Are we safe? Owen looks at his twelve-year-old daughter. She shouldn't have to ask this. Yes, I promise. You're safe. But he's not sure he believes it. Later, after Emma's asleep, Owen makes a decision. He calls his sister two states away. "Can Emma stay with you for two weeks, just until I start as chief and things settle?" His sister hears something in his voice. "What's going on?" "I'm being tested, and I won't risk her to pass the test." Next morning, October twentieth, Owen drives Emma to the airport, books a same-day flight. At security, Emma hugs him tight. "Come get me when it's over. Two weeks, I promise." He watches her disappear through security, walks back to his car, sits in the driver's seat, allows himself one moment of despair, then starts the engine. Drives back to Riverside alone. Owen returns from the airport at eight PM. The house is empty. Emma's absence fills every room. Her backpack hook is bare. Her cereal bowl from breakfast sits unwashed in the sink. Her math homework lies on the table, unfinished. Owen doesn't turn on lights, just sits on the couch in darkness. The weight shows. He hasn't slept properly since October fifteenth. Five days of constant vigilance. He's lost eight pounds, not eating regularly. His hands shake slightly when he holds his coffee. He jumps at car sounds outside, checks door locks, windows, rereads the threat letters, analyzing handwriting. At work, the isolation is complete. He's still officially lieutenant until October twenty-third. Other officers avoid him. Conversations stop when he enters rooms. His desk sits isolated, nobody nearby. At nine thirty PM, Emma calls from his sister's house. "I'm here. Aunt Carol made spaghetti." "Good, that's good." "Dad, you sound tired." "Long day, sweetheart." "Are you okay?" Long pause. Too long. "Yeah, I'm okay." "You don't sound okay." "I just miss you." "Then why can't I come home?" Owen can't answer honestly. Soon, two weeks, then things will be better. "Promise?" "I promise." "Dad?" "Yeah?" "Why do they hate you?" The question hits like a physical blow. Owen's eyes well up, first tears through all of this. "They don't hate me, Emma. They hate change. What if you just didn't change things? Would they leave us alone?" "Yes, they would." "Then why not?" "Because some things are worth fighting for, even when it's hard." "Is it worth it if you're sad?" Owen has no answer. "I should go. Aunt Carol says bedtime." "Okay. I love you." "Love you too, Daddy." The call ends. Owen sits with phone in hand, crying silently. This is the moment where most stories end. The good guy gives up. But Owen Carter isn't most people, and what happens next proves why. He walks to the kitchen, opens his laptop, types out a resignation letter. "Mayor Wilson, after careful consideration, I have decided to decline the position of police chief, effective immediately. This decision is personal. Thank you for the opportunity." His cursor hovers over Send. All he has to do is click. Emma comes home tomorrow. Threats stop. Life returns to normal. Hayes wins, but his family is safe. His finger rests on the trackpad. Then his phone buzzes. Email from Sarah Mitchell, her article just published. Subject: Your Story Is Being Told. He opens it. Riverside Detective Who Removed New Police Chief Has Fourteen Complaints, Zero Discipline. Owen reads, sees the fourteen names mentioned: Thomas Williams, Teresa Johnson, Richard Miller, others. Each one filed a complaint. Each one was cleared. Each one got no justice. Teresa Johnson moved away. Others gave up. The system broke them. Owen closes the resignation letter without sending, deletes the draft, opens a new document, writes, "October twenty-third, Day One Priorities." He lists: Review Hayes case immediately, audit all overtime from past three years, request independent review of Internal Affairs procedures, meet with officers who want reform, establish anonymous reporting line for misconduct. He's not quitting, he's preparing. At eleven o'clock PM, Owen goes for a run, six miles through empty streets. His body protests, exhaustion, weight loss. He pushes harder, returns home, showers, collapses into bed. Sleep comes at one thirty AM, three point five hours of rest before morning. October twenty-first, seven o'clock PM, Riverside Park, Elm Street entrance. Owen arrives exactly on time. Daniel Harris sits on a bench in civilian clothes, nervous, checking over his shoulder. "Officer Harris?" "Just Daniel, please." They sit, silent for a moment. Then Daniel speaks. "I need to tell you something. I recorded everything that night. Body cams are policy." "No, I mean I saved it, before it could be reviewed and redacted." Owen looks at him. "You made a copy?" "Yes, and I have more. I've been recording certain things for six months." "Why?" "Because I'm tired of being part of the problem. I joined to help people." "But Hayes runs this department like a gang. Either you're in or you're out. I don't want to be in anymore." Daniel hands Owen a USB drive. "Everything's here: Body cam footage, audio recordings, my written testimony, union meeting from October sixteenth, conversations where Hayes discussed handling complaints, evidence of coordination to protect certain officers. You know what this means for you?" "Yes. I'll be labeled a traitor, probably forced out, but I can't stay silent. What happened to you was wrong. We all knew it. Most said nothing." Owen takes the drive. "You'll have to testify publicly." "I'm ready. Just promise me something." "What?" "When you're chief, make it safe for officers to do the right thing. Right now, it's safer to stay quiet. Change that." "I promise." They shake hands. Daniel stands. "Chief?" "There are more of us than you think. We're just scared. Show us it's possible to speak up and survive." He walks away into darkness. The next day, October twenty-first to twenty-second, the community mobilizes. A petition launches online. "We stand with Chief Carter, support police reform." Within twenty-four hours, one thousand two hundred signatures. Within forty-eight hours, two thousand eight hundred. The signers include residents from all districts, business owners, teachers, nurses, city employees. Twenty-three current and former police officers sign anonymously. October twenty-second, two o'clock PM, a rally forms on City Hall steps. Three hundred fifty people attend. Large for Riverside. Lisa Thompson speaks. "Owen Carter represents change, real change, and change is always opposed by those who benefit from the broken system. But we, the people of Riverside, demand accountability." She reads names from the petition, the first fifty. Each name a voice saying, "This matters." James Anderson speaks. "I've represented victims of police misconduct for fifteen years. I've seen the pattern. Complaints filed, investigations cleared, justice denied. Chief Carter represents the possibility of something different." Teresa Johnson appears via video. She moved away in two thousand eleven, but she recorded a message. "I filed a complaint against Detective Hayes. I withdrew it because I was scared. If Chief Carter can change that culture, every citizen of Riverside will be safer." Eight officers come forward with written statements supporting Owen. Most are under thirty-five. Some are veterans who've been silent. Officer Daniel Harris goes public. "I witnessed the October fifteenth incident. What happened was wrong. Chief Carter deserves our support." The union responds. "These officers do not speak for the majority." But the wall is cracking. That evening, Owen watches the rally video from his empty house. Tears fill his eyes again, different tears, relief, gratitude. He texts Lisa, "Thank you." She responds, "Don't give up." He won't. At eleven o'clock PM on October twenty-first, Sarah opens the encrypted email. The zip file contains forty-eight messages, all between Hayes and Brooks, October twelfth through fourteenth. She reads the first one, "From Raymond." From Raymond. Hayes at R H P D dot gov. To G Brooks at Riverside dot gov. Date. October twelfth twenty twenty four nine fifteen A M. M subject. The Carter Problem. Body. Gerald. Just heard from Union sources that Wilson appointed Carter as chief. You need to stall the announcement. We can't let him take command without a fight. Call me. Sarah's hands freeze. She reads the next one. From. G Brooks at Riverside dot gov. To Raymond. Hayes at R H P D dot gov. Date. October twelfth twenty twenty four ten thirty A M. Subject. Re. The Carter Problem. Body. I've delayed the public announcement until the octe fifteen council meeting. That gives us three days. What's your plan? She keeps reading. Email three. I'll be at the council meeting. If Carter shows up, and I think he will. He's arrogant enough. I'll handle it. Make sure the announcement happens after, so everyone sees him embarrassed first. By the time they know he's chief, he'll already look weak. Email four from Brooks. Good plan. But what if he does not show? We need backup options. Email five from Hayes. I'm working other angles, trust me. Either way, Carter's first day will be his worst day. And if we're lucky, his last. Sarah calls a forensic email expert at three o'clock A M. Wakes him. I need authentication by morning. He works fast. By eight o'clock A M. These are real. They came from the city server. Timestamps match. Authentication keys verify. Sarah attempts to reach Hayes and Brooks for comment. Hayes doesn't respond. Brooks's assistant says. Mister Brooks declines to comment on alleged correspondence. Alleged. Not denying. Just deflecting. Then Sarah remembers the overtime audit she requested weeks ago. It arrives at eleven o'clock A M. Independent auditor. Commissioned by the finance director months before these events. The report shows. Four point two million in total police overtime over three years. Irregularities identified. Three hundred forty thousand dollars. Eight percent of total. Primary discrepancies. Detective unit. Highest individual earner. Raymond Hayes. Two hundred three thousand over three years. Cases where overtime claimed but minimal work documented. Eighty three instances. Auditors note. Multiple requests for documentation were denied or delayed by city manager's office. Brooks covered for Hayes. The emails prove conspiracy. The audit proves fraud. Everything connects. Sarah publishes at two o'clock P M on October twenty second. Headline. Leaked emails show city manager and detective conspired to sabotage new police chief. The article includes twelve of the most damning emails. The audit findings. The timeline matching emails to actual events. Hayes and Brooks both declined comment. The article goes nuclear. Fifteen thousand shares in two hours. Regional media picks up immediately. National outlets notice. Riverside corruption trends. Mayor Wilson issues a statement. I am deeply troubled by these allegations. I have called for an emergency council session tonight to address this matter. The Union issues its own statement. These alleged emails, if authentic, do not represent the values of our membership. If authentic. They're already distancing. Community groups demand Hayes be fired. Brooks removed. Full investigation. The emergency session is scheduled for six o'clock P M. Owen will be there. Hayes will be there. Brooks will be there. And this time, everyone will know who has the power. Sarah closes her laptop. Grabs her recorder. Heads to City Hall. The reckoning is tonight. October twenty second, six o'clock P M. Emergency city council session. Every seat filled. Standing room overflowing. Five T V cameras. Twelve reporters. Hayes sits in back row with his union attorney. Brooks sits with his personal attorney. Owen stands near the side wall in lieutenant uniform. Last time wearing it. Lisa Thompson presides. This session addresses serious allegations published today regarding city manager Gerald Brooks and Detective Raymond Hayes. Both are present and will have opportunity to respond. Mayor Wilson speaks first. I appointed Owen Carter as chief because he represents integrity and reform. The events of October fifteenth and subsequent revelations have only confirmed that judgment. Tonight, we determine how this city responds to evidence of corruption. Sarah Mitchell testifies under oath. Presents her investigation timeline. Email verification process. Audit report findings. The emails were authenticated by forensic expert. They originated from city servers. The audit was independently commissioned. Everything corroborates. Hayes's attorney objects. Emails were obtained illegally. Sarah. I received them from an anonymous source. I'm protected by journalist shield law. Counsel accepts the evidence. Then Daniel Harris stands. Full uniform. I was one of four officers who removed Owen Carter on October fifteenth. I was ordered to do so by Detective Hayes. I've since reviewed my body camera footage. I'm providing that footage and my testimony. He plays the audio. The room hears Hayes. Escort him out. Owen. I have one minute and forty two seconds remaining. Sound of vinyl gloves. Owen's steady breathing. Hayes. Stay out of police business. Owen. This is being recorded. Hayes. Nobody cares. Silence fills the chamber during playback. Daniel continues. I participated in an improper removal of a citizen. I'm ashamed. Chief Carter deserves better. This department deserves better. Applause erupts from the gallery. Lisa calls Hayes to respond. He stands. His attorney tries to speak first. Detective Hayes, you may speak. I acted to maintain order. Who authorized the removal? It was a disruption. Who authorized the removal? Silence. The presiding officer must authorize removal. Councilmember Allen did not do so. You acted without authority. Hayes sits. Brooks is called. He stands. Confident posture. I followed all proper procedures. Did you delay Chief Carter's appointment announcement? I scheduled it for the council meeting as is customary. October eighth to October fifteenth. Seven days. Why? Strategic timing. Your email to Detective Hayes says that gives us three days. Three days for what? Brooks's attorney. My client exercises his Fifth Amendment right. Lisa. This isn't a criminal proceeding, yet. But we note your refusal. Then Owen speaks. Walks to the podium. I want to clarify something I knew. The room murmurs. Mayor Wilson shared her concerns about resistance to reform. She mentioned that Mister Brooks seemed reluctant to announce my appointment. I asked her to delay it until the council meeting. I wanted to see how the system would react to an ordinary citizen asking for accountability. I needed to know what I was walking into. Gasps from the gallery. I didn't expect to be physically removed. But I wasn't surprised. I chose to let them show you, the public, the council, the media, exactly who they were before I took command. Some might call that manipulative. I call it strategic. I needed proof. Now we have it. He looks at Hayes. You did exactly what I thought you would. Thank you for that. Lisa calls for a vote. Motion. Accept audit findings.